Good evening. We will call the Burlington City Council October 6, 2015, meeting to order. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome you here tonight. Would also like to remind you to silence any electronic devices that you may have. If this time you would pray with me. Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance this evening. Amen.
Amen.
First item on the agenda is a proclamation. At this time, we'd recognize Captain Bud Cato, and also Chief Smith. Proclamation proclaiming October 2015 Fire Prevention Month, City of Burlington. Whereas the City of Burlington is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all Burlington residents, and whereas fire is a serious public concern, homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, whereas the Burlington Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and education, whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and whereas three out of five home fire deaths result from fires in properties without working smoke alarms, and whereas when smoke alarms fail to operate, it's usually because batteries were missing, disconnected, or dead. And whereas half of home fire deaths result from fires occurring at night when most people are asleep, whereas Burlington residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room outside each sleeping area and on every level of the home, and whereas residents should take their smoke alarms on a, excuse me, should test their smoke alarms on a monthly basis, whereas the 2015 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Hear the Beep Where You Sleep." Every bedroom needs a working smoke alarm. Effectively serves to remind us that we need working smoke alarms to give us the time to get out safely. Therefore, I, Mayor Ronnie K. Wall, do hereby proclaim October 2015 as Fire Prevention Month throughout the City of Burlington, and I urge all the citizens of Burlington to install smoke alarms in every bedroom outside each sleeping area and on every level of their home, and to test their smoke alarms every month throughout the year, this, the 6th day of October 2015.
Thank you, Mayor Wall, members of council. Captain Cato is going to give you a short synopsis of some of the activities we're going to have for Fire Prevention Week of Month. But I did want to just recognize him for a second, because this week Captain Cato turned in his retirement papers. So he's going to be leaving us in April. And so he has spent, had two different tours in the Fire Prevention Bureau with us, where we sort of drafted him in, and then he went back on the line suppression, then came back. And he's done some great things and made a lot of contacts with the public and the kids and doing lots of things. So I was going to try to bring that up. He's going to tell you a little bit about what we got going on.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. We have some programs going on in the city, of course. One of the programs that I started was I wrote a grant, and the grant was for 50 smoke detectors. And it was going to allow us to go into homes with residents, and usually we targeted elderly, that couldn't reach their batteries to change them, and was going to give it to them. Now, we're going to give it to them, we're going to put it up for you where it's supposed to be. So I partnered up with Alamance Elder Care, which are great people, until I realized later on, the word Alamance Elder Care was in there instead of Burlington Elder Care. So now I'm getting calls from lots of people in Alamance County that got, what they've done is they put a flyer in the Mills on Wheels that said, "Smoke detectors are available, and we'll come install them." So now I have lots of people calling. I only had 50 to start with. By the time I begged the state, at the office of the State Farm Marshal, calling them and kind of trying to guilt them into some stuff, they, we're up to now, we have installed 400 smoke detectors-
Wow, great job.
-in people's homes. And so I'm still begging for more, and as I beg, they still give them to me. They give me 100 at that time. But it's a wonderful program. They'll call, not through, we don't see anything else out through the Mills on Wheels, they just know the program now. So we call, and they'll call, we'll go, and we'll install it for them. It's great. Another program we're doing, we're starting this Friday, in the month of October, we have a program that we hold a fire safety program for our elementary school kids. And we love doing this. I go to the schools with a calendar, and I'll say, "Pick a date, and here's your times," and let the teachers sign up for what time they want. And we tell them, we spend about 15 minutes with the kindergarten through second grade, and we spend about 25 minutes with the third grade through fifth grade. Last year, we saw 4,556 elementary school kids. We held a program specifically for them. Five of us go into the, five different classrooms at a time. We hold our same program. We come out either 15 minutes later or 25 minutes later, and we shoot to the next classroom. And it keeps the teachers from having to gather every, all of the kids up in the assembly. We decide it's better if we go into the classrooms and leave them in their classrooms. Worked out great. The teachers loved it, the school system loved it. We're in and out, we give a great program. The kids, the K through second grade gets a program called "I Spot Something Hot." It's really a cool video, it's interactive with us, they love it. And then the older kids, we've done a, I've done a PowerPoint program where we can compete. They can compete with each other about fire safety questions that we ask. It's really well received. We, we're going to 10 schools, we're starting with the Burlington School this Friday, that will be in there. We look forward to it. We go into the private schools and to the public schools. So if you're elementary school in Burlington, we're coming to see you. And I'm bringing four guys with me, and we're going to have a great time with them. It's lots of them. When you get to the larger schools like the Highland Elementary, they're, they pack a full day. Every slot's taken, because they have lots of kids. Any questions for me?
No, thank you for what you're doing, and also congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
Job well done, thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Next is a presentation to council. We'd recognize Ms. Vicki Hunt, representing Paws. Ms. Hunt, welcome, ma'am.
Thank you so much for putting me on the agenda tonight, and as always, thank you for continuing to work with Paws. For the past 13 years, we've had the common goal of improving the pet population problem, overpopulation problem in Alamance County. In 2000, our annual adoptions from the shelter were 214, which is an abysmal number. This year, our live release rate is on target to be 2,600. And that would include adoptions, returned to owners, and released to rescues. And we're very proud of that number. We're still, have a way to go, but we have made great progress. Our intake has dropped 2,000 a year since the opening of the spay-neuter clinic in 2010, which I told you would happen. Where low-cost surgeries are performed, the rent is paid by Paws and staffed and run by the city and our great Dr. Courtney. But there are still families below the poverty level that cannot afford even the low-cost spay-neuter surgery for their pets. This summer, the Paws Board voted to contribute $30,000 each year for five years to fund what's called the $20 Fix. This program is run by Animal Kind of Raleigh, and I've known about them for years. And they do a great job promoting spay-neuter, the health benefits of spay-neuter, and they're a very good organization that Jess Arias, our great shelter director, she has reached out to them and is working with them on this program. The $20 Fix will target families in great economic need. Their goal, Animal Kind's goal, and of course, our goal, and your goal, is to keep pets with their families and out of the shelter and not producing kittens and puppies. We always have said that the overpopulation problem can't be solved with euthanasia or solely with adoption. We must spay and neuter our way out of this problem, and we've gotten off to a very good start. With your help and the help of the county, Graham, Meben, Elon, and all the communities in Alamance County who are participating each year financially in supporting the operation of the shelter, we're moving in the right direction. And together, we'll continue to make even more progress. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it very much.
Here's your chair.
Oh. Mr. Hunt, we appreciate him as well. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, we'd like to recognize Brandon Locklear, who is representing the National Weather Service. Welcome.
Thank you for having me. The National Weather Service's mission is to build a weather-ready nation, to improve America's readiness to respond to extreme weather events. Becoming a weather-ready nation is a shared responsibility that starts with the federal government and extends down to the city level, and continues all the way down to the individual citizen. The Storm Ready Program, as you see up here at the sign, was started to help us get there as communities certified as storm-ready are better served to save lives. A storm-ready community must maintain a 24-hour warning point, an emergency operations center, they must have the capability to receive National Weather Service warnings and watches, and just as important, they have to alert the public. The slogan of the Storm Ready Campaign is "When Seconds Count, Storm-Ready Communities Are Prepared." As we've seen over the last several days with the devastating flooding in South Carolina, extreme weather events can and will happen close to home. And I am confident in saying that after working with Roger and the City of Burlington, that when that time comes, the City of Burlington will be prepared. On behalf of the National Weather Service in Raleigh, I'd like to present Roger and Cecilia Burlington Storm Ready Recognition. Thank you.
Feel free, now, feel free to say a few words to Pilar.
Well, it's, emergency management oftentimes works in the background in a lot of these cases. And you'll see us send out messages, and what we're, but for the most part, we're setting up to be able to address any emergencies when they come up. So as such, kind of, we're in the shadows, and suddenly the things that we have planned come together. And a lot of times, folks will say, "Well, why did that occur?" And it's because someone was there planning. Working with the National Weather Service just helps us, and in all the places we have to work, helps us to get these plans together, to be able to communicate if there is hazardous weather or something like that that's going to affect the citizens of Burlington, get that information out as quickly as possible. Thank you for the opportunity to come up here-
Yes, sir.
...this evening. Thank you, Brandon. Thank you, Chief, for your support.
Thank you. Also, thank you, Mr. Locklear, for being here tonight as well. Congratulations. Before we go to the next item, I'd like to recognize the Elon students that are visiting tonight for a media writing course. That's their assignment. So you've been punished, and you're here with us tonight, so hopefully we'll make it short and sweet for you. But welcome. This time, we'd recognize City Clerk Renee Ward.
This is council's not our responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest in matters that are before us. This time, I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda.
None. None. Next item is the approval of minutes, April 31, 2015. Work session, September 15, 2015, City Council meeting.
I move.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Adoption of the agenda.
The draft, adopt agenda is written.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. A, to adopt a resolutions to authorize the city manager to execute all agreements, contracts with the North Carolina Department of Transportation, Public Transportation Division, to receive demonstration grant funding for the fixed route transit system, temporary close Lexington avenues from Davis Street to Maple Avenue on October 30, 2015, from 2:00 p.m. until 3:00 p.m. for the downtown Halloween Spooktacular Events and Parade. C, to set a date of public hearing for October 20, 2015, to consider an economic development incentive agreement pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-7 dot 1. D, to approve a final plan for Sterling Phase 2C McIntosh and Lake for property located on the south side of Bonner Bridge Parkway. North side of Lock Ridge Parkway is shown on plans by Ali Williams Carmen &amp; King Incorporated, dated September 1, 2015, containing 19 lots. E, budget amendment 2016-9 Recreation Senior's Health Insurance Information Program Grant. F, budget amendment 2016-10 CDBG reallocation of funds. G, budget amendment 2016-11 Animal Services.
May I be a part of the consent agenda?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Next item is the unfinished business. One, public hearing has been continued to consider an application rezon from B2 General Business District to CB Conditional Business District for the use of a unified business development. This property is located at the northeast intersection of Graham-Hopedale Road and North Truck Street, south of Martin Street, references Alamance County Parcel Developmentation Number 147805. This is being continued from September 15, 2015, City Council meeting. At this time, I'd recognize Ms. Amy Nelson. I'd also remind, remind the public that the public hearing has been closed. Ms. Nelson, welcome.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. This project is a rezoning. It has the recommendation of staff and the city's technical review committee, which included a traffic impact analysis. It has been through extensive reviews. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend the request to council with the use and development conditions submitted. The commission found that the rezoning will not adversely affect the adjoining properties, is in keeping with land uses already in the area, and that it is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan.
Any questions from council to Ms. Nelson?
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I wonder if you could tell me about the, what's going on the border of the property? There's nothing that says what kind of landscape buffer is there.
Along this border here, with the B2 and O&amp;I properties-
Yes.
-it, for general business up against residential, which is what it is now, basically, it would only require a 15-foot buffer for landscaping. Since it is conditional, they are providing 20 feet, so it is a more extensive buffer. It's 20 feet of landscaping, and they have a fence as well.
Any other questions for Ms. Nelson? You say there's a fence as well?
There will be a fence as well.
Mayor, I've got, I do want to first apologize. I was probably the reason this was continued, because I was held up in traffic on the interstate as they shut the interstate down for four hours at the last meeting. But I have taken two opportunities to review the video of the meeting and go through the public hearing segments, and I do want the minutes to notate that, just for clarity. But one of the things I want to be clear on, that I saw, the DOT project that we're looking at at Graham-Hopedale, there's, this project will have no impact on that project. Is that what I understood?
They're doing basically some preliminary work-
Okay.
-on that project, but they're not going to install anything that would have to be ripped out by DOT later.
That was my question. So we didn't have a duplication of efforts?
Right.
And then, secondly, the railroad easement, has been abandoned or terminated, is that correct?
Yes.
I wanted to verify that. And just for clarity purposes, Zone B2 now, so this is actually a downgrade in zoning, is that under conditional purposes?
Pretty much, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I've got no questions.
Any other questions?
Mayor, I move that we approve the rezoning.
I second.
Got a motion, or any more discussion? Got a motion, and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Thank you, Ms. Nelson.
I also make a motion to approve the statement of consistency. The City Council finds that the above amendment is consistent with the City of Burlington's comprehensive land use plan, and that this action is reasonable in the public entrance, and in that the amendment is compatible with existing land uses in the vicinity and reflects the change in land use patterns in the area.
Second.
Got a motion, and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Thank you. Next item is new business. Two, City Council will consider temporary closing Davis Street from Main Street to Spring Street, November 7, 2015, from 11:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m., with a rain date of November 8, 2015, for the Rusty Bucket to hold a food truck rodeo, conditional upon meeting all requirements of the City of Burlington's special events policy. At this time, we'd recognize Ms. Angie Ball. Ms. Ball, welcome.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman. I would like to, of course, block Davis Street from Spring to Meben, November the 7th, from 11:00 to 8:00, to hold a food truck rodeo, which we will bring around 25 food trucks into downtown for an event from 1:00 to 6:00 that afternoon. Just trying to bring more excitement and people into downtown, and what better to do food, so.
I understand. The questions for Ms. Ball. You've done a great job of bringing and supporting downtown, and for that, we really appreciate your many efforts. This is not the first time you've been in front of us, and thank you very much.
No, and I still get nervous every time I'm in front of y'all. Why?
Yeah, this, this, as far as I know, this is like one of the biggest food truck rodeos
we've had. So hopefully, man, we got a few little busker bands we'll have, and, you know, food trucks, and just from 1:00 to 6:00. My hope is it'll be not raining.
Good, we hope, yeah, we hope. Any questions for Ms. Ball?
I move that we approve the temporary street closing as requested, conditional upon meeting all requirements of the City of Burlington's special events policy.
Second.
Got a motion, and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Thank you, Ms. Ball.
Thank you.
Three, City Council will consider approving an agreement with Hazen and Sawyer, the amount of $146,000 for design of sodium hypochlorite facilities at the J.D. McIntosh Water Treatment Plant, and approved budget amendment 2016-12 for the cost of design for the conversion. At this time, we recognize Mr. Bob Patterson. Mr. Patterson, welcome, sir.
Mayor Wall, council, thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight. Well over a year ago, staff started working on this potential project to convert our disinfection process at the treatment plant. Currently, water is brought in from the lake, raw water, and I'm not going to get bogged down in the treatment process or chlorine chemistry, but just touch on it briefly. The solids are settled out, and chlorine is added, and we currently use chlorine gas. It's kind of bubbled into the water, reacts with the water, and forms hypochlorous ion, which is the actual disinfectant. Goes through the rest of the treatment process. We used to add more chlorine and send it out to the disinfection system. A few years ago, we changed that process, and we add ammonia rather than more chlorine for the, for the distribution system. But we still use chlorine at the plant. Chlorine gas is some pretty nasty stuff. We've used it for years, fortunately, without incident. But if you recall your history in World War I, it was used in trench warfare by the German Army against- by the German army against, against, uh, soldiers. So it can be very dangerous. It's heavier than air and will settle, and, uh, can, can cause fatalities. Fortunately, we have not had an incident, but that's one, one issue that we would like to alleviate that, that potential. Um, we expect in the future that it, chlorine gas will be more regulated from a homeland security perspective because of that, that potential, um, use as, as a, uh, harmful agent. So that's another reason not why we would, we would like to convert to, um, adding liquid chlorine or, or bleach, basically, sodium hypochlorite, um, very similar to the Clorox that, or, uh, bleach that you may buy in the grocery store, just that, at a, a high, a more concentrated, um, solution. So, um, we did a selection process, um, arrived at, um, Hazen and Sawyer would be the best, best option for us to, uh, to undertake this process to design. We're also concurrently, um, changing over the disinfection process at the South Burlington Waste Water Treatment Plant. Waste water plants don't use near the volume of chlorine, so we're undertaking that design in-house with, with our staff. But the, at the water treatment plant, because of the volumes and the, and the complexity of the process, um, we need to have a consultant, uh, onboard to do that, that design work. So, uh, before you today, I have, um, a request for a budget amendment of $146,000 to, uh, to pay for that design, and also to approve the, uh, the contract with Hazen and Sawyer. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Patterson?
Above I have one. During the transition, will we see any, will citizens see any difference in the taste of the water during?
No, in fact, we're using bleach at the Ed Thomas Water Plant now, we've, for over fifteen years, so from that standpoint, there would be no difference. It, it's still, once it reacts with the water, and it's the same disinfection process.
With this work by Hazen and Sawyer, will, will this complete the project? Will there be an additional piece to it?
This would be the design work, and then we would, we would bid it out, um, and, uh, you know, get bids from, prices from contractors. There would also be a construction oversight phase that we would probably use Hazen and Sawyer to look after, um, at that time. We would anticipate that would probably be a budgeted project, um, perhaps next year or the following year.
Any other questions for Mr. Patterson?
Move we approve the agreement, Mayor.
Second.
Got a motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
Thank you.
Item number four, agenda, item number four, city council will consider request from Duke Energy for a perpetual easement designated for electrical service equipment to be installed to serve the Fire Station Number 6 site. This time?
Not only do we need to do the approval of the amendment, but we need to approve the budget amendment too, Mayor.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the budget amendment as well.
I second.
Got a motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Thank you. All right, uh, well, let's see. So at this time, we'd recognize Mr. Laney Rue, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. City staff has received a request from Duke Energy for the city to grant a permanent easement around electrical equipment to be installed to supply utility service to the Fire Station 6 site. The proposed easement is located in the north front corner of the property. This equipment will be located outside of the, uh, public right-of-way and on city-owned property, therefore, uh, it presents a need for an easement dedication to Duke Energy. The engineering department, along with the fire department, have reviewed the, this request and, um, find it acceptable.
Any questions for Mr. Rue?
It's going to be underground?
Th- this equipment will be above ground.
Above ground, okay.
And it's that area that you're, just those...
That's correct, in red there, yes, ma'am.
You wanted the big green boxes?
Transformer and, uh, switchgear, I believe.
Big green box.
Yes.
That's right.
That's the technical term.
Yeah. Like a big green egg.
Any other questions?
May I make a motion that we approve the, uh, request for the perpetual easement?
Second.
Got a motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Thank you, Mr. Rue. Brings us to public comment period, we have one. Ms. Richmond, Maureen Richmond, uh, the topic is neighborhood safety. Welcome, Ms. Richmond.
Maureen Richmond, 2040 Martin Street, Burlington. Hello, everybody. This morning, I had a beautiful experience. I had a beautiful Burlington experience, and it's really typical of a lot of my experience here. I enjoy the city greatly. Today, it was off the boat. So I was at Andrews Elementary School in the neighborhood around here today, and it was just gorgeous, really. It was a wonderful day, and the children were laughing inside the school, and everything was peaceful, and it's just like life should be, just the way we want it. And then I treated myself to a walk at Town and Country Park, which is not very far away from there, a beautiful park maintained by the City of Burlington. And this, these, to my way of thinking, are just wonderful examples of how successful you all are and, and your predecessors have been at making this into a wonderful city, and we enjoy it. I'm really excited about the, uh, document that you recently put together, put your signatures to, Destination Burlington. I've read parts of it, not all of it, but the parts that I've read have just embodied a wonderful spirit of a place that I really want to be, and I think anybody would have that same reaction to it, anybody who studies it. So, um, with all that in the back, um, background, uh, what I want to say to you is that, um, we on Martin Street have a real problem right now with high-speed, dangerous traffic, and it's been that way for several years. I think it's going to be increased with the, um, development that's going in at the, um, intersection of Martin and Graham Hope Dale. There are a number of children that live on Martin right now, and of course, it's not an ideal place to be raising children because of the, because of the high-speed traffic and the lack of places to play right close by, but they are there. And I don't know how many, I, I don't really know how many people live in the trailer park. I think it might be about a hundred and twenty, um, something like that. And they're children there from tots to teens, and they gather on the streets to play as well as to wait for school buses. There's another house on that same side of the street that, uh, has a number of children attached to it, I don't even know how many. They also play in the front, sometimes get in the street. There are lots of pedestrians that pass through there on their way to, um, who knows where. A lot of people that have to walk beyond where the sidewalk is, and they're walking on the street with this, with this traffic. My car has been sideswiped once, of course, I don't park it on the street anymore because of that. Um, and the neighbor across the street from 2040 has had his mailbox flattened over, and this mailbox was sitting, you know, like, um, here's the curb, mailbox was way back inside in his yard, and some car came barreling down from, um, Bland and Martin Street and, you know, went right up in his yard and mowed over his, his mailbox. In the nighttime, in the, in the wee hours, there oftentimes cars that go through there at sixty miles an hour. In the daytime, it's usually about forty-five. It's still dangerous. So my request to you is to seriously consider terminating the street in the middle and making cul-de-sac out of the residential end, uh, to protect the neighborhood character of that part of the street. The western end where the development is going in is not residential at all, there's some social services offices down there with their driveways that empty onto Martin Street. But it, as you come on to the east side of the street, it changes dramatically, right where the pavement narrows, and there are a few houses that are left there from times when it served Western Electric, and as a matter of fact, the house I live in, uh, was bought, sixty, over sixty years ago by a Western Electric employee, and the family has been there ever since, so the street there is like sixty, sixty-five years, that's the Ammons family that owns that property. So anyway, that's it. If you would just please, uh, subject this idea to your, uh, consideration and have, come have a look and see what we deal with some of the time. I think it could really help take care of, protect some of the children. Obviously, the school buses and all the other things, not, if you terminate the street, they would not be able to get through. But it seems to me that something could be arranged so that the children could either go up to the corners, or the buses could come in partway. If you do this, a berm could be placed across the street, it does not need to go all the way to the curbs, because if it does go to the curbs, it'll interfere with water flow, which needs to go down to the, uh, gutters and the drains, sewer system at the bottom of the, of the hill where it comes together like that. So it doesn't have to go all the way, but it just needs to stop traffic completely. It could be planted in keeping with the principles that are, um, embodied in Destination Burlington, and it would create a place where the kids could play safely there at the end of each of the cul-de-sacs, or meet their rides, or whatever they need to do. Anyway, that's it, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Richmond. That brings us to, uh, city coun- council comment.
Mayor, could, could we go back just a minute on that? Would it be appropriate to ask the staff to look at this, and then maybe refer it on to the traffic commission? I mean, if I understood, Ms. Richmond, you know, this is a request, you know, you know, how does everybody else feel about it? I, I would think, I mean, I would just, my thinking off the top of my head, get the staff to look at it, then maybe get it on to the traffic commission, you know, and at some point, it would come back to us, you know?
Can do that, we can coordinate that with, uh, Ms. Richmond.
I mean, I, the, 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 conceptually, I understand exactly what the topic is. You, you've got a very busy section, and it turns partially to residential. But if we could take a look at the traffic flow and the average speeds, do some studies, and get back to it, so we can kind of see what it looks like, at all points in time, make it a clear picture of what we need to do.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea.
You say get back to you, but go through the traffic commission process, is, is that what I'm hearing?
I think what they're asking to do first is get a, a staff, um, overview of what Ms. Richmond's referring to, and then if you see fit, you could always report it back to us just as, uh, for information, and then we could direct you to move it to the traffic commission, or, I think that's what I heard you say.
That's, that's it, yeah.
Yeah, because a couple of years ago, I think when I first, uh, got elected to the council, I met with Ms. Richmond, and I, we were over there on the, on Martin Street when the traffic was coming through, and, uh, it is a problem. Is that, it, it uses as a cut-through. So, you know, that's one of the issues that they, they cut-through off Turk Street to come back around to Graham Hope Dale.
Right.
So, you may want to look, take that as well.
Thank you, Nolan, we appreciate that. We got, um, city council comments. Uh, I'd like for us to consider counseling the November 2nd work session, and also the November 3rd city council meeting due to the elections. I know that you guys that are running will be extremely busy those two days, so I'd like to at least, uh, give us some consideration for that for you.
Is it an election, I doubt?
We hear. It is for some.
Oh, it is.
Well, I thought you gave me a Huffman, Mr. Huffman down there, we could run show while he had. We want her to be here.
I think it's a real good suggestion, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, we got several, so we're in favor of that? Do I get a little nod? Okay, good, thank you. Uh, also, Mr. Kirk, I'd like to say thank you for the ones that have traveled, uh, Shadow Brook and, uh, Edgewood. I noticed they were completing the paving today, that really looks good. Thank you very much. I'm sure the citizens that travel through there, uh, are excited about the way that looks, and hopefully sometime in the near future, uh, we can get the bottom of, um, Rockwood O'Neil and Edgewood as well, so, but, uh, that really looks great. Again, to the Elon students, thank you for being here this evening. I told you we'd be out shortly, so, uh, you can stretch it and say it lasted about three hours, and maybe you'll get some additional credit for that. Any other comments from council?
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to go into closed session, uh, first with the General Statute 143-318, 1184, for an economic development project update.
Second.
Got a motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We shall return. We shall return.